This is Stephanie Diaz de Leon.
This is Nicholas Garson.
This is Omar Wahid.
And this is Rob Chapel.
And it's three sixty-five amplified. If you heard us quietly silently giggling, it's because Rob, you were going up on your numbers.
So low.
He was going low and then he was going up instead of going. So I thought you were gonna do three, two, one, and it said you went three, four, five. And I was like, I don't know what to do with this.
Two, three, four.
I'm not even gonna explain myself.
But I want you to.
Feels like a more musical choice.
What were you doing?
It was, okay.
We're switching it up. New year, new us.
Yeah, we're kind, we're like, we're doing the professional soccer way instead of the college soccer way. College soccer, the clock counts down. Professional soccer, the clock comes up.
This is not a soccer podcast.
I didn't know that they track time differently between the two.
And also, I didn't know that we had to follow other people's way of doing things. Yeah, so we're back.
We're back.
I hope folks had a good, pleasant holiday break. Hopefully restful. Is that no?
I went to Des Moines.
Oh, good. To see your.
See my nieces. There's three of them. And Christmas.
What do you mean?
We, we hosted it this time because we don't normally celebrate it. We celebrated because all my nieces are half Latina and their mothers are Mexican Catholics. And we host all the birthday parties. So my was like, hey, we host all the other things. We kind of want to do Christmas. So we all went overboard on the gifts.
Oh, no.
I, I've, I've never spent that much on Christmas. Mostly I've ever spent on Christmas is maybe like fifty bucks and Chinese food and watch Harold and Kumar three.
Very specific.
Thank you. It's my favorite Christmas movie. But yeah, we went overboard and bought a lot of gifts. That's it.
That's it. And you're, and you're still feeling it?
They're so excited and jumping and they got overwhelmed by all the stuff because we did go way overboard.
A little bit more than you should.
I bought a lot of gifts. And so it turns out so did everyone else.
So wait, does that mean next year's expectation is it gonna be like, do we have to, or do we have to reset?
I think we need to reset.
So last year was actually for two years, right?
I'm gonna do that. They're not gonna like it, but.
No, have conversations like, hey, Santa seemed a little excited. Maybe Santa will pull back.
That's only gonna work for the youngest one.
That one's easy though. That one you can give her like little small things that are really, really less expensive.
She'll be four next Christmas, so maybe.
Yeah, she won't know. Like everything will, you can get like five dollar stuffed animals that you just wrap every single one.
No, no, she told me what she wanted.
Oh, did she?
Oh, my God.
She said she wanted play food because she's really into that.
Oh, there you go.
And a Minnie Mouse toy. And I found a Minnie Mouse ice cream stand, which blew her mind.
That's your fault. She asked for a toy.
She asked for a toy and I accidentally found the perfect toy.
Big. So she wanted like something simple and you made it complicated.
Yeah, that's my fault.
Yeah, you made it extravagant. So because like play food, very specifically, a nice, small and affordable gift. And a Minnie Mouse toy. Again, sounds like she wasn't expecting like a big stuffed animal or Minnie Mouse herself to show up. But you said, no, no, no. I'm going, I'm gonna go overboard.
I am extra.
I'm, you have seen my coats is what you're, you're welcome.
You noticed.
How about you, Nick?
Oh, mine was relaxing and low key.
Yeah, that is nice. So was ours. It was nice and lots of baking and cooking and stuff. So it was nice and low key. I had a question in my head that just went away, but it was a good one. Darn it. I was gonna ask something ridiculous, but it went away.
Gingerbread houses, overrated.
Overrated. And they don't taste good. I don't like gingerbread houses. Someone's gonna argue with me.
No, you're right.
Okay.
No, you're not gonna do that.
Is that true? Nicholas, are you gonna tell me that you love?
No, I just never ate mine. I would always just make it.
What do you do with it after?
Nick is like, you're supposed to eat those.
I'm like, that's why I was like, wait, you ate yours?
So I, we never made them growing up, but I went to like a holiday party a couple of years ago. And they had gingerbread houses and like, okay, time to eat the, like, go ahead. Like after they voted who won or whatever, like eat their houses. And I ate one. I ate a piece of one. And I was like, this isn't good. Like everyone made such a big deal. And I thought about having our kids do them one year. And they're like, no, no, those aren't this, those don't taste well. They don't, no.
I'm pretty sure I see them.
Are you?
Well, my nieces tried. And they thought it was fine, but it was also cookies and sugar.
But it's not even good sugar, is it?
Like ginger snap cookies are much better than gingerbread house material.
I mean, I like a good, what is it those made of the, I don't remember what they're called. The houses are made of. Is it gingerbread?
Yeah.
That's, yes. Which is different than ginger cookies. And that's why you don't like it.
That's why I don't like.
It's basically less good gingerbread.
Yeah, it's just dry. Everything got dry. Like everything tasted dry, which don't eat them. Just build them.
Build them and enjoy them.
Enjoy them. Team building project with your family or an argument. Uh, let's go ahead and move into our first. I could see those becoming like stressful in a household. Um, let's go ahead and move into our first story we want to talk about, Rob.
Uh, yes, it's, uh, January, which means it is gonna be Martin Luther King Day in a couple of weeks. And there's a ton going on in Madison as always. And we have a, Omar put together a little guide for, to the events. And Omar, can you just pick out a couple, two, three that, that kind of jumped out to you?
Sure. Uh, well choir practice, if you want to join the MLK Community Choir, uh, they meet on January fourteenth at six thirty PM and January eighteenth at eleven AM at Mount Zion Baptist Church. No tryouts necessary, but if you want to show up, you do need to at least practice and you will end up performing at the city and county MLK Day of servants. So that's an exciting opportunity there. If you want to flex your golden pipes. But speaking of that same day, you'll be performing, uh, yeah, the, the Day of Servants. Uh, it's the fortieth annual one. So, uh, forty years in the making, there's gonna be a slew of speakers, including Bishop Vashti McKenzie, who is the first female bishop of the AME Church. Uh, she will be the keynote speaker. And they will be doing some awards later for the MLK Humanitarian Awards. Go to that. Most of these things are free, so I, I recommend showing up. The one I'm most excited for is actually not on MLK Day. It's actually the week after, uh, the UW Madison MLK Symposium. Dawn Zelay Abernathy, who is an actress, author and activist, uh, the youngest daughter of the civil rights movement. And co-founder Ralph Abernathy and the goddaughter of MLK Junior will be the keynote speaker there. So that's pretty exciting. I might actually go to that one. But, uh, yeah, check out Madison three sixty-five for the full list of stuff uh, that's happening in Madison. There's a whole lot.
And if you see anything that's missing on there, we'll add it. Um, yeah, that's gonna be your, um, uh, to kind of plan your, your week. This is because the stuff, the weekend before and on the Monday of, and like you said, even the week after. So, uh, we'll put a link to that in the show notes.
Now, what's the next thing we want to talk about this morning, Rob?
Uh, new grocery store on the south side. Um, Luna's, uh, this is a long story because, because Luna's opened in the allied Dunham Marsh neighborhood, uh, twenty nineteen. After that was, that area was a food desert for like ten years. Um, and they got some community support. They got a city grant. Um, and they opened it. Maryam Nunez opened that, like I said, twenty nineteen. And it was such a success. And it's very, it's like a really small corner store.
It is.
Uh, and this is where we get our tortillas.
That's where, yeah, we get lots of supplies.
Lots of stuff.
Thanks, Maryam.
But, uh, and, and they were going to actually open a store on Park Street, a big, big store on South Park Street.
Yeah.
Um, in a development there. And they announced that in January twenty twenty. And we know what happened shortly thereafter. So that whole plan got just set aside, unfortunately.
Yeah. And, and credit to Maryam to also recognize that like, this isn't the right time for us. This isn't smart. Like, like, absolutely. I think she and, and the team were disappointed. They weren't able to move forward with it, but recognized pretty early on and shared out that like, hey, this is just not the right time for us to move forward in this direction. This would actually do some more harm than good.
Right. But, but remained committed to the idea of opening more stores.
Yeah.
And now that's gonna happen a little bit later this spring. They're working at, on, again, on South Park Street, a little bit further south. Uh, in the old YUWAN location, which is the, the Asian grocery store, uh, at the Villager Mall. Uh, and, uh, we, they retired and they closed the store. So they're just, Luna's is gonna move in there. The thing about Luna's is it's very community focused. It's not just a retail place, right? It's say they have their block party every year. They're really committed.
They do their holiday toy drive.
Yeah, I was in there the other day to get tortillas and this, the table in the middle, this is a very tiny shop. It's very tight. They got a lot of stuff in there. But this is table in the middle and it was just stacked with books. And I didn't ask, but they, they were working around something, some sort of book drive or something. And that's what she's trying to bring to the south side also. And, um, and, and we know the south side is undergoing this like revitalization with the black business hub, the Center for Black Excellence in Culture, the New Central Espino, just a lot of happening on the south side. Um, and she's also gonna be, in addition to the grocery store, she's gonna have a kind of a takeout restaurant. It was mostly Caribbean food.
Yep.
Which is very exciting. She's from Dominican Republic. So, um, and that's gonna be amazing. And, um, it's actually her, uh, her sister who's been working in the store, uh, at LA Drive is gonna kind of manage the store, this new store on the south side. So it's still a family business. Um, and, uh, Dave Dahmer, our colleague talked with her and we posted that story on, on New Year's Day. Uh, so we'll look to that and you can read up all about it. And we will be on top of that. She hasn't announced the opening date yet because there's always, always something. But, um, they'll have a grand opening and I will be there and we'll cover that for you and make sure that everybody stays up to speed.
Now, before we hit the break, we did have one more update that you wanted to share. Yes, that you were working on. I want to say New Year's Eve.
It was New Year's Eve.
Right before dinner.
Yeah.
Which delayed our dinner. And our children were really cranky about it.
Yeah.
Because we're having takeout that night. So they're excited about the takeout we were gonna get. And I was like, no, we gotta wait like an hour. Why? I'm like, daddy's working, damn it.
Well, because I got a tip that Charles Madsen was out.
Collecting signatures. Yeah. So they, so going back a little bit, what was, what was the deadline for an incumbent?
Right. So Charles Madsen, as folks know, uh, just real quick recap, has been accused of domestic violence. Uh, he was censured by the city council for sexual harassment. He was arrested and spent a weekend in jail for not sexual harassment, but for domestic violence charges, eight felonies. He's due back in court February third. Uh, the, and he told me, I interviewed him before he got arrested. Um, and he told me that he didn't, couldn't see himself running again, that he was tired of defending himself, wasn't gonna run again. Uh, and I reported that. And then, uh, the deadline to file for an incumbent to file a declaration of non-candidacy is December twenty seventh. The idea being people in the district should know if the incumbent is not running so that they can decide that they might want to run. Two people had already filed to run against him or to run whether he ran or not. Carmella Glenn, who we'll talk to in a minute, and Anthony McNally. And, um, but he never files his non-candidacy. So I asked, what happens? If, you know, if that's the case, and a kind of clerk, Scott McDonald told me, it doesn't really matter. Just as long as he files something by January seventh. If he doesn't do that, then folks get three extra days to collect their signatures. Um, so I found out I got a tip on Tuesday, late, late afternoon, that Charles was spotted out in the neighborhood on the north side collecting signatures because he does in fact now want to run again. Uh, he did not respond to my request for comment or confirmation, nor did his attorney. Um, my question for the attorney was, is there a, does he have any reason to believe he's not gonna be in prison? During his.
During his tenure, if he gets reelected.
Yeah. Uh, is there, has there been a deal or something like that? Or does he just confident that he'll be acquitted? Um, because this, the charges he faces are serious. I mean, he doesn't have a lot of criminal record. He doesn't have any criminal record really. It's sixty years potentially, if you add up all those eight.
Yeah, if he's found guilty.
On all eight. And they were, and they ran consecutively, which wouldn't happen. But anyway, there's a real possibility that if he's convicted, he would serve prison time while he's also on city council. So I don't know if he's thinking that is just like not putting those two things together, or if he's just, um, I don't know.
Yeah, but can't not answer it. Go ahead.
Now, Rob, how many signatures do you need to collect? Because this is funny to me.
Twenty.
Only twenty?
Yeah. And it depends, that's based on a percentage of the electors of the last election. It's a percentage of how many people came out in the last election. Very small percentage, obviously.
Yeah.
I feel like it should be more signatures for any of.
For all of them.
For all of them. It seems, who doesn't know twenty people? That's.
Well, there has to be twenty people within the district, right?
Yep.
At different residential addresses. So it can't be all from the same address, does it? That's the thing that I've always been confused about.
Um, I think you can have more than one person from an address. Like you could, you could get two people who live, it's like a husband and wife.
So yeah, you technically would have to know like.
Ten families.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, but it's a nice, it's good. And it's easy to run for office, right? That it's not terribly.
No, it doesn't. You don't make a barrier, right? That's, that's the thing too. You don't want to make this a barrier, but twenty seems.
It's not a lot.
No. But he has yet, from what you've known since this recording, has not turned.
He hasn't. I haven't seen anything filed. He has till January seventh to get those twenty signatures. So till Tuesday. Um, if he doesn't do anything, if he doesn't file anything, then everybody else's papers are due the tenth. Everybody else will get three days.
Yeah.
Um, so Carmella Glenn's nomination signatures are already in and, and, um, audited at the McDonald's or not yet, but he's, he's aren't due till Tuesday either. Um, so we'll see what happens. It'll be an interesting race. If there's three candidates and one of them is Charles Madsen, like there will be a primary in February. We'll see.
So what is he saying to these people as he's asking for signature? Like, you may have seen that I was in jail this weekend, but I'm running for city council now.
I'm not gonna say.
Um, what, what I was told by the person I talked to who didn't want to be identified.
Yeah, understandably.
Understandably. Um, that he said, I'm, I'm running. I don't think I'm gonna win, but I want to run. And this person declined to sign his petition. And so, you know, who knows if he'll get an offer. I mean, it's, it's, I'm sure he's got enough people supporting him that he'll get. I wouldn't be surprised if he gets twenty people.
Yeah, I'm sure. I, I don't, just based on the support I've heard. Um, yeah, he'll get the twenty. But, you know, collecting signatures and, and, and turning them into very different steps.
Right.
So, you know, yeah, he still might decide like, this is not
Not worth it.
Tenable for me to, to move in this direction, or I just don't have it in me to do it. But I, you know, it'll be interesting.
Yeah, it will be. So we're gonna take a break and we're gonna talk to, um, one of his opponents who we, we booked this interview before we knew that Charles was gonna try to run again. So, uh, we'll take a break. We'll be right back with Carmella Glenn.
We're back. And joining us now is a candidate for city council who messaged us a couple of weeks, almost over a month ago now, I guess, and said, I'm running uh, for city council. And my first thought was, oh, that makes a lot of sense.
That feels right.
Because she is Carmella Glenn. How you doing, Carmella?
I'm doing good. Thanks for having me.
Well, thank you for being here so much. And you are running for, uh, city council in District eighteen on the north side. Um, introduce yourself just a little bit for folks, uh, who, readers of Madison three sixty-five will have heard your name and probably like, I remember something about her. But tell us, uh, you work for the county now and tell us sort of about your, your professional life and, and your background a little bit.
Okay, so, um, Carmella Glenn, I work for Public Health Madison in Dane County. I am the Violence Intervention Supervisor, um, which lives within the Violence Prevention Unit. Um, and, uh, it is, we work, I work alongside all of our preparedness in that unit and substance use. I am best known for my baby in Madison, which is still ongoing, um, running a program called Just Bakery.
Yep.
Employment Training, which was a, um, employment training for those with barriers to employment. Um, I, everything I have done has been around violence intervention. This job, kind of like how Just Bakery was. I have a criminal justice degree and a culinary degree.
Oh, wow.
And so like Just Bakery was like.
The perfect.
The sweet spot.
Yeah, the right, yeah, absolutely.
Um, that's kind of what violence, this job at violence, um, doing violence intervention is. It's, it's like a combination. Right before I came to public health, I was working at Department of Health Services. I was the peer respite, peer services coordinator. So I oversaw any contract in any program that had to do with certified peer specialists, whether it was our peer run respits, our peer drop-in centers, Wisconsin Voices for Recovery, um, and all of the certification for that. Um, and then I, I start, started my work with Asha Family Services. Actually, they had a satellite here back in early two thousand, um, that is a culturally relevant domestic violence agency in Milwaukee. Antonia Van, um, my mom actually met her while my mom was incarcerated. She came in and did sister circles, talking about domestic violence for women. Um, and when my mom came home, I went to work for her. And then I was at Days.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. And then I was at Days for a while. Um, loved it. But every time I take a job, it always felt like something was missing. So I'd go work with women and it was like, but there's a man's story.
Yep.
And then I'd go work within, with men. And then it was like, well, wait, there's more to that. And that took me into correctional. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, was born and raised in, um, between Madison and actually Stoughton, Wisconsin.
Okay. One day I'm gonna tell you the story about Stoughton and you're all gonna judge me for it. And rightfully so.
What about Stoughton?
Can I tell it?
Yes.
Yes, I wanna hear.
I mentioned the city of Stoughton.
Well, first of all, remember, I am not from here. I did not.
She's from Southern California.
Yes.
Moved here in two thousand and four.
Oh, poor thing. You came here from.
I know. It's his fault. He, whatever.
Love.
But you've probably been here at least ten years.
Yeah.
And I mentioned the city of Stoughton. And she said, I thought that was a road.
He was like, what? He's like, no, what do you think it's going to?
But the Stoughton Road goes to Stoughton.
Goes to Stoughton. How would I know that? Am I from there? Like, what's there? What do you mean? Isn't it just a road? He's like, no, dear.
No, it's a whole city.
Yeah.
Town.
Yeah, it's a village.
Village.
I don't know.
Yes, I, I was, I went to, um, elementary and middle school out there. And then, um, I've been here since eighth grade, back here since eighth grade. I'm fifty-two now.
Stop, you are not fifty-two.
Yeah, I turned fifty-two. You know, black don't cry.
It does not. No, brown, black, I don't cry. But, oh my goodness, no.
Yeah. So I've been here, um, uh, living, I lived out in the forest for a little while. I have a son actually that just got married. That's thirty-four.
Wow.
And that, that really tells you how funny. Because I think I'm thirty-four sometimes. I'm like, how did you get that age? And so, um, he, uh, I raised him out into forest, um, with my ex-wife. A lot of people don't know that. I was married to, um, I'm from, uh, the LGBTQ plus community. Um, and so we raised him out there. And then, um, during sobriety, I got sober twenty-two years ago now. When I was thirty. And that relationship kind of just dwindled after that. Um, and I moved back to Madison and me and my husband have been now together for about twenty years.
Oh, wow. My goodness.
Twenty, it'll be twenty next year.
Wait, is that the right? You're like, okay, everyone remember next year is twenty years.
Well, this year.
Oh, this year. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
How dare you? That's already.
I know, twenty, twenty. Everyone keeps saying it. I'm like, oh, yeah, that's right. January second means twenty twenty-five.
So it, you know, it's great to hear, um, a bit about you and allowing folks to learn about you. It, it seems like, um, a lot of your work is, you know, calling back to some experiences that you've had growing up, you know, and familiar in your family. I, you know, that is something that, you know, I can relate to in terms of like, I find myself doing work of service, very similar to what, you know, um, your experiences it has been. Like, can you talk a little bit? Because, you know, running into this race, you know, being the seat, you know, if you win, it is a different kind of service.
It's a different kind of service.
But it's still service. And, you know, so what, you know, what is it with, you know, servant leadership, you know? Hearing this calling for you, it feels like, if I may call it that.
Um, I think early on in my career, I thought one by one was enough. So you think of like doing domestic violence. I love, ran their support group at Days. And I love to just sit with the women and hear what that, what they were talking about. And there's this, um, when I'm working in, was working in community for a long time, you have this kind of like, you feel like this one-on-one, one at a time, taken care of. Um, and then I realized that, um, if I'm not at the table with like decisions and policy being made, it really is just like these one-offs, you feel like. Even though I know I did, made a lot of change and there's a lot of people.
And there's still impact, right?
There's still impact.
And yet you also recognize.
I also recognize there's more you can do.
Yep.
And every time my life gets a little calm, I create more stuff. A very high stress job, like violence intervention, one of the most political positions I feel like I've ever been in. Um, I still want to do more. I, I, I just really feel like, uh, there's something I can offer because of my lived experience and all of my years of seeing so many different systems play out. Um, that I can offer and bring to the table. And I really believe in educating people, like with their civic responsibility. And, um, I think I'm one of those people that for like the north side and, uh, that can talk about some of those things and educate them. Like, like, for instance, um, I'm one of those, I'm gonna jump around on you just a little bit. So I've been at, my team has been at the Harmony Apartments since the homicide last October. And we've been working with residents to, um, build that social cohesion back after, you know, two homicides.
Absolutely.
And like other, one of my biggest wins I talk about over there is they really wanted like a speed bump over there.
Oh, wow. It seems so simple.
Seems so simple, right? There's so many things.
Yeah, but there's layers, just bureaucracy to that, right?
And layers. And it was like, oh, I don't know if we need that over there. And we met with the residents and the alder and we talked to them and we educated them on how to show up for meetings and tell them why. And that, they got this speed bump.
Oh, wow.
Like see, and that gave them a reason to go on and like build out like this resident council we're working on over there. And I want to like, I don't, I want to just be the mouthpiece that says the final vote, based on the thousands of voices I hear on the north side because they're educated and watch them all start showing up at meetings.
And asking questions.
And asking questions. And, um, and there's a lot that do that. Um, but there's not as many that do it that look like me. There's not as many brown and black people that show up for that stuff. We kind of put our head down and we just, um, try to get through life. And, you know, living in a state that we know is one of the worst places to live for brown and black people, highest incarceration. I just want to start changing that.
And change that motivation a little bit.
Yeah.
And also see like, it does matter. Like it impacts me to see like a representative of mine who looks like me and sounds like me, or at least can, you know, can nod their head like I can. And like, oh, okay, they understand what I'm saying when I nod my head or something. It means something, right? And it has a different way that, for which, you know, we show up for and such. So like, understanding that like there are folks on the north side who want to see themselves represented. understanding that, like, there are folks on the North Side who wanna see themselves represented and heard in a different way is an important reason to, to run.
I mean, look at how diverse our council has gotten in the last few years. Um, good, better, indifferent.
Yep.
It's diverse.
Yeah, it's changing the way that we, you know, where we see how power is rested, right? And how it can be used and who, if we show up with that means and what that changes, and that's an important thing to see.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I did, go ahead.
Can I, uh, you said something intriguing and you hinted at it, but I'm curious, you said Violence Intervention is like a really political job, and you, you, you gave the example of the speed bump, but I would think that most people would just be sort of against violence. So I wonder what is it that makes.
Violence Intervention?
Well, what, what is it? What makes it political?
Um, so, uh, the version of community, of Violence Intervention we're doing is really based on like the Biden-Harris Community Violence Intervention model of around all that money that was given to like the OJP to be able to have people with lived experience, credible messengers, peer support, being able to do that, and the reason it makes it so political is because, kind of like how I lived with Department of Corrections and people that, uh, there's fear involved with harm, right? With guns, and as soon as you put fear in a political situ- situation, you have, you know, a mayor that has people to answer to, or a county exec that has people to answer to, and a common council that has people to answer to, and then a community that's allowed, and so it just becomes, um, and you know, we just had a, at the school, we just had, um, our, you know, that happen, and all of those are just really political thing, they became, they can become very political, and it's just, are we doing it right and are we making sure we are? And my goal is to do, um, you know, place-based Community Violence Intervention. We have a lot of, which is one of the reasons I wanted to run on the North Side, and with this district, we have a lot of apartment buildings around Madison that have, to me, some of our worst violence situations. Um, our worst violence we have in this is systemic.
Yep.
Um, and, and so you have people who feel like the world is on their neck. And, um, then we all get surprised when.
Violence comes out.
When violence comes out.
Right, cause fear begets violence, and, and, and so if basic needs aren't being met.
Yeah.
Folks are like scavenging for whatever, not just for needs, but whatever power they can hold on to.
Absolutely.
Does not mean that's okay, that they react violently, but that's what is existence, and if we only deal with, um, the, the violence as it happens and not the root of it, right?
That's right.
You know, we're not getting it, we're just gonna perpetuate that harm.
Over and over and over, and it's why I went to work for Public Health is because it felt like it was a really good fit for me because I love data. I just don't always know that the data is coming from.
The right sources.
The right sources, you, you, you can say evidence-based programming or that, but who was at the table to give you the evidence?
Yeah, well, and where did you get that evidence from? And who did you go to?
Who did you go to?
What was the zip code? What was the area, the area code? Who did you, like, and were you only using, like, you know, I can't even, like, home phones? I didn't even know what they're solving. Landlines, yeah. Like, I mean, cause that changes.
It does.
It changes the data, when you, like, oh, I'm, you know, and that's, same with you, in similar, in that, like, when I see polls or data, you know, and people are like, well, they, we surveyed these people, how did you survey them?
Yeah.
What zip codes did you use? What were your area codes that you used? And did you only require landlines? That changes a demographic in so many different ways.
So many ways.
So many ways, right? And that's, I mean, you're just perpetuating, or you're just trying to like, you know, you, you had a, you know, theory about something, and you, you're, all you're trying to do is prove that theory. That's why you use, you know, and, and that's, it's important to kind of look at those things and such. Um, you also mentioned, um, liking to, to hear people's stories. Can you talk a little bit more about like, what it means to you to hear people's stories? Cause i- in this role as an alder, that's part of the role, right, is to, to have people be heard, right? And, you know, you know, what you hope to, uh, how people can like, reach out to you and, and not just learn more about you, but also be heard and such.
Yeah, so, um, as someone who is a survivor of sexual and domestic violence, my healing didn't start until I started talking, and as soon as I started talking and you're saying something in a room, and a layer comes off and all of a sudden someone comes up to you and they're like, oh, my God, you're telling my story. Or, you know, my mom going to prison, or my husband being in prison, or, um, my, uh, mu- brother, like, it felt like everybody in my family that I loved.
Uh huh.
Um, my father, uh, and then they come home and they start telling their stories and their healing, like, when I'd sit down in those groups with women and for the first time, I don't, I, I don't care if they had a twenty-five-carat diamond ring and their husband was a neurosurgeon, they still had a black eye. Um, or I heard from the person coming out of prison who, um, wanted change for their lives. I just believed, it's one of the reasons I've done everything I've done around my work is I really believe that when you sit across the table from someone and you hear from them, and you understand them and you break bread, um, you are forever changed, and so I love hearing from people. I love them understanding that there's someone that has maybe not walked in their shoes, but a pair of shoes that look like it, and I think it's the peer in me, you know, I'm a Certified Peer Specialist and trainer. Um, and I believe in self-determination, I don't believe that people need a savior. Um, but they do need someone to hear them.
Yep.
And all different, I went to a door recently of a, when I was gonna do my nomination. It was before I, you know, got my information of who voted what way, so it was just blind knocking, and they were like, who'd you vote for? I was like, the only reason someone would ask someone that looked like me that is cause you didn't vote who you think I voted for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And she was like, how could you have voted for her? And da-da-da-da-da-da, and I'm like, well, this isn't, um, this isn't, uh, about parties, this role. And, um, to me, the thing that you're talking about of why you voted for them is exactly what I would like to see for you. You don't wanna be priced out of your home.
Yep.
You'd like to stay here for, and pass this down to your children, you'd like a safe place to live. Um, you'd like to be able to have, uh, it still stay really green and all of our trees. I agree.
Yeah.
And she was like, she's signed it. And then her husband is in there and he's like, you're not gonna sign that, are you? And she was like, at least she voted, it doesn't matter, I don't care who people vote for, I just think people need to vote. And so I just think I have a great way of, um, I'm still gonna do what I wanna do, um, but I, I think at the end of the day, a lot of us want a lot of the same thing, you know, food in our refrigerator, be able to pay our bills. Do I think there's a certain part that might want other things?
Yep.
Yep.
We'll have that discussion later.
You, you mentioned about the, the factor of, of just needs being met.
Yeah.
And, uh, obviously, a big issue that's been before the council internet arena is, uh, is housing.
Yeah.
Uh, affordable housing, and there's, there's sort of a.
Less of, less, more affordable, let's say it's, that's what it is.
More affordable, yes.
Yeah.
Um, but there is kind of a NIMBY thing happening in some quarters, so what's your view on affordable housing specifically on the North Side?
Well, I don't know if we have any place left, I'm thinking, I think we're pretty penetrated over on the North Side. We say yes, even when it's NIMBY, I mean, we, we, we say yes and yes and yes, we have one, I mean, we have uh, four CDD, like thirty percent of your income, low-income, Northport Apartments, Packers, Kennedy, and one more, and I'm not thinking of it. Um, and then we have one, two, three, four, five, and I think with Huxley one going up like six, affordable, more affordable. Um, uh, so I am all for more, uh, affordable housing. I think we need, we're gonna need a lot more.
Yeah.
Affordable housing.
Yep.
I'm also for doing it correctly, I, 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 we can't just throw up six, three to six hundred apartments in the middle of a cornfield without a bus or a school.
Yeah.
In the middle of a cornfield.
Yeah, but say that, like, we've made it affordable for you, however, you can't get to, it's a food desert.
Yeah.
Right, and then, and it's a transportation desert, like, how is that affordable?
Yeah, or, or even, you know, we, even on, um, there's a couple that I, we're in, I'm in seventeen different apartment buildings. Um, around Madison, we were in this last year. Around, and we usually go in cause of our own calls for service, they start going up, and that's kind of how we start monitoring and get prevention in there and start talking to residents, and it's the same thing, and so we have to, we have to make sure that if people are gonna build here, that they have a strong relationship and understanding, we're a little special here. With how we are, um, and, you know, just because it worked in another big city, doesn't mean it's gonna work here.
Yeah.
I mean, we have some structural systemic issues that go into how people move through this city, especially black and brown people. And so, um, we just have to, we like, have a list, we're working on it now. Um, on, uh, so if you want the tax credits and you want this, that, you know, what, what kind of management? Um, uh, supportive services, where's the buses, where's the schools? Have we talked to the schools? Are we gonna over-inundate the schools? Do we need to build more schools? It just, I, the, I just see so much, not just politics. So much of my work, I've, have seen like these check the box, like, we're done. I remember when I, uh, was running Just Bakery, I had the feds came in, cause I was getting FSET money, food share, employment training. And they came in and they were like, what is success? Uh, can you tell us about some successful situations? And I don't know, is it not a really good day and they frustrated me and, but also it could just been any day, cause I say what needs to be said sometimes. Um, and I'm like, success for who? Success that I got someone a job, but they live on the West Side and they don't have a driver's license and they have to drop their kid off at eight o'clock in the morning? Or success that the persons came four times, each time they relapse or they struggle, but they come back and they come back, then they come back, and I feel like there's this, every once, you know, I've had to fill out a lot of data forms for programming to get grants, and like, there's these check the box, check, check, check. I just wanna stop checking the boxes, unless there's like fifty boxes, and like, all the things are checked, like, so if we're gonna, yes, to build the house, housing, but I also wanna make sure, is there enough streetlights and speed bumps and buses and schools and green space and playgrounds and gates and all the things that I've learned that has to go into it? Um, because we need it.
Yep, and also somebody who thinks about those things in, in that, in that role, right?
Yeah.
As, as an alder.
Um, as you, I think this is your first time campaigning.
Yeah.
For office, isn't it?
Yeah.
What's, has anything surprised you in terms of just the, the process of campaigning and knocking on doors and hearing from people?
Um, no, nothing's really surprised me, um, yet. I'm not going into this blind.
What are the other, um, other issues that folks are, if you're asking, like, what's important to you, what are you hearing?
Uh, teenagers, uh, having idle hands, so, you know, um, walking through neighborhoods late, um, you know, maybe rummaging through cars, even a lot of the neighbors are like, they don't take anything, they're just running through my car, and there's pork. Um, uh, uh, money for our schools. North Side is interesting, um, it feels like we're often brought up, which we like, that no one talks about us that much, like, we're quietly forgotten as a stepchild. But right up until the point when somebody brings us up because, you know, we just had a homicide over there. Um, and it just seems like that's the only time we make news.
Yeah.
And, um, or, or, or if we've been great to let a lot of affordable housing, no one puts it like, oh, North Side, you know, all the neighbors over there love to be able to support their community and they're letting them build another, no, it is, ah, the North Side has all the, you know, like, we just have, while we have a kind of middle conservative democratic community, we have people who really wanna do great by their community, it's a large number, and the other thing was, I can't tell you how many houses I went to where the people, this is like the third generation that's lived in the house.
I was gonna say, how many people are trying to like, hold on to their house?
Yeah, fifty, sixty, seventy years, it was their parents or their grandparents and, you know, bought it for eighteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars. Um, yeah, so a lot of that, um, and then environmental is really big, Cherokee Marsh being over there, making sure, um, a lot, I've heard, you know, conversations that I wanna hear more about around like, um, uh, keeping those, I, I'm, I'm a huge lover of Troy Gardens. I'd love to see a version of Troy Gardens replicated around different parts of the city. Um, that there's people that live there, um, it's national, you know, it's one of the, it's a nationally recognized and studied program. Um, same with like Northport and Packer, Northport Apartments. That blueprint is used for low-income housing all over.
Yep.
But then everyone studies it and nobody does it.
Anything with it, yeah.
Like, having the neighborhood center there and Pat Wonkett, who's run it for years, and, um, like, you go over there, it's like a small little city over there of everything that's accessible and any of your needs getting met, so that's really well done.
Mm-hmm, it's something you wanna replicate and see.
Um, I have to ask, uh,
Boo-bye.
We, uh, Charles Massey, the, the incumbent, uh, told me he wasn't gonna run.
Yeah.
For reelection. We find out, um, just a couple of days ago, that, um, that he's circulating petitions for signatures and seems like he's gonna give it a try. He's obviously, he's been censured, he's, uh, has no committee assignments, and he, if he wins reelection, wouldn't be on any committees.
Yeah, so would he, he could only vote?
He would vote at council, he could attend committee meetings and talk.
And talk, okay.
But he could, but he couldn't vote, and he could only vote at common council. Um, he's also charged with eight felonies.
Yeah.
And will be back in court in February. Um, so, all that to say, that's just sort of background. What, does that, does the fact that he was, uh, cause when you, when you announced your candidacy, nobody knew what he was, he hadn't said, in a way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was kinda talking like he was gonna run again, but didn't really say, um, and then said he wasn't, and then now he's, now he is. Does that change how you are approaching this race at all, or?
Just that I might have to have a primary. Yeah, I might have to have a primary, cause now there's three of us. Um, that's really it for me, I'm, I was, you know, there, I'm, um, moving forward to run my campaign regardless of who's in the race, uh, that's who I thought I'd be going up against, so.
So no, you were prepared to know.
I was prepared either way, um, to run against him.
That, that makes sense, um, my daughter wanted me to ask, uh, would you be in favor, uh, or will you be in favor of improvements at Bree Stevens Field so that we can have a women's soccer team?
I would be in, yes, yes, absolutely.
She'll be very happy to see you, you just gotta love your vote.
Who is not even in the district, but it's fine, but it's fine, she might show up for you, and like, start like, campaign is for you, it's on that. She's not kidding, though, she, if that happens, she will like, love you for the rest of your life, even if we said yes, now she's your biggest fan. Um, you know, you've been in the North Side for a really long time, like, what do you love about the North Side?
Uh, it feels like you live in the country. Um, you live in the country and live in the city, you like it the best of both worlds over there, it's so green and such old trees and, um, I, uh, was telling, um, I had just done Black Oxygen, uh, around, after the election, and I was telling her, it's like, you see foxes and cranes and deers and, um, all, all different wildlife. I remember telling my insurance guy that, when I was getting older insurance, and all of a sudden he's like, yeah, I don't think we can.
Cover you?
Cover you, I was like, oh, yeah, it probably doesn't wanna think that I'm driving around and there's deer jumping.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Oh, that's lovely, yeah.
Yeah, so, I, and, and it's so diverse.
Yeah, it is.
My mom used to work for Dane County Head Start, uh, in the mid-eighties, um, and we'd go over to Northport Apartments, that's where it was at, and it was when, when the really big migration of Mung.
Oh, sure.
Were coming, and, um, and it, everyone, there was like just an array, I hadn't, even on, living on Williamson Street and Willie Street area where I grew up, was not as diverse as like over there, it's so diverse.
It is so diverse, I remember telling Rob, I remember the first time we took him to the North Side, it was to see maybe a baseball game? We were just like, yeah, and I was like, where, I'm like, wait, wait, there's all the people.
Yes, there's all of us, and we stay away from everywhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah, you people that live on the North Side, we don't like interact. Yeah. People that live on the North Side, we don't like interact with all y'all.
You only like to interact with each other in that side, I realized later. But I was like, oh, and so when I heard like they were building as, as, you know, a soccer team or what, you know, what, yes, I know what it is, Rob. Um, like a soccer team and, you know, and, and using, you know, and, and forth Ford Madison, stuff like that. And understand like they were all kind of modeling, you know, and keeping on the North Side. I'm like, it makes sense to me. It made sense to me. Like, it's of course the North Side. It makes sense to the North Side. Certain things just make sense on the North Side.
Yeah.
Because it was like, it's like, oh, this is where the diversity is in Madison. So everybody was telling me like, no, no, they have a huge university. Like he tried to tell me that too. Like they have a huge, you know, we have a huge university. You're just, I'm like, I don't, and I work on campus. I'm like, there's not diversity on campus, y'all. And when there is, we all see each other, we're all in the, like, we all see each other at the same events. So we're like, oh, hey.
Right.
Kind of thing. We all run.
No, we're all on the North Side. We're all over there.
And then we're like, oh, it's all on the North Side. I see it now.
Well, Carmela, thank you so much for giving us so much of your time.
Yeah.
Uh, how can people find you or follow you? Or are you on the social medias or your website?
Uh, yeah, so um, you can Carmela for District Eighteen dot com. Or you can email me at friendsofcarmellaglen@gmail dot com. Um, I will also on Tuesday, the seventh, at El Sabor, the new one on the North Side. Cause you know, the big one, we have it on the North Side. Um, uh, we'll be having a launch from five to seven. Um, so that'll be really cool. I'd love to see some people come out and
Support and meet you.
Support and meet. And if you can't, um, with a primary, it's gonna be a little extra money, so donate.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hey, well, Carmela Glenn, thank you so much again for your time.
Thank you. Thanks.
And we're back and it's time for a question that nobody likes.
I like the question.
Okay, Rob, Rob, did you like it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Rob does not like it at all.
I'll tell you why in a second.
Okay. So the question is, what would the title of your biography be if written by your nemesis?
And the reason I don't like this is I don't believe I have nemeses.
And then we went through a whole list of
Everybody in the room said, oh, yeah, you do.
And we only named like a couple, maybe three or four.
Like at least
And not including us.
Come on.
Like, we're part of that group of nemesis, but you didn't even like nemeses or whatever it is that you want to, whatever makes it plural, but um, or this is why, I mean, this is why you're my nemesis. Cause you're like, you know, you have to use this. And G is, what is my favorite silent G is what?
Flem is my favorite silent G.
Yeah. That's a real thing for Rob. He has thought about that. And every once in a while, he reminds me that his favorite silent G is Flem in a word. And nobody needs to know that, Rob. That's the title of your biography. Nobody needs to know that, Rob.
Well, he has to pick. Uh, okay.
Omar's ready.
Smug jerk. I don't know, something like that. Um, I personally believe that everyone loves me.
But it's not true.
That is not true at all.
And your nieces are not gonna like you next, like Christmas if you don't level up.
But I'm a little bit of a smug jerk.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good one.
It's, it's really on the nose. Um, like I, like I said, I believe everyone loves me, but I, I know how I am.
You know why? Cause you're smug.
Exactly. So, that's more.
Smug jerk, colon, DMR heat story.
Exactly.
Well, who's right, who is writing these?
Your nemesis.
Oh, they're writing it?
Yeah.
I don't get to write it myself?
No, no one gets
I have a smug jerk.
It's not autobiography. It's biography written by your biographer nemesis.
It's still the same guy.
Yeah, it's not gonna change.
Uh, not living up to expectations would be mine. By my nemesis.
I think mines would just be an eye roll. Like, that's it.
Is that real emoji?
Yeah, there's so much is annoyed by me all the time. I'm okay with that.
Mine would probably be no comment, or I should have said no comment.
No, it's about you.
I know.
I should, no, because you wouldn't have said, I should have said no comment.
No, like the author of my biography wishes, wishes they would have said no comment when I asked, when I tried to talk to them because all the, most of the nemeses
That's about them. What was your
Quote marks.
I know, but that makes it
Or no comment, or
I said no comment.
Awkward questions. Cause all the nemeses you guys mentioned are people I've covered.
No, we had others, but you wouldn't let us finish.
I'm sure there are others, but
There are childhood nemeses that you have.
But the, the nemeses that I'm thinking about, who are gonna write my biography are people I've covered and are mad about it.
And so in quotations.
Yeah, no comment.
No comment. I should have said no comment.
Yeah, something like that.
All right, friends. We'll be back next week.
Happy New Year. Three Sixty Five Amplified is a production of Three Sixty Five Media, a nonprofit community news organization based in Madison, Wisconsin. If you've listened this far, you should go ahead and subscribe. Wherever you're listening to this, uh, subscribe to the show so you get the uh new episodes in your feed every Friday. And then follow Madison Three Sixty Five wherever you get your news. Blue Sky, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn, wherever you get your news, we'll be there. Have a good weekend.